Okay. Hey, also we're live. I'll be live right now.
Not yet.
Hello.
Hi, good afternoon, everyone. We're currently live.
Okay. Okay, good afternoon, everyone. Thank you all for joining today's meeting of the Board of Trustees of Finance in New Orleans. We will call the meetings to order. Is there a roll call?
Yes, there is. Roll call. Chair Stephen Smith, Vice Chair Giselle Johnson-Banks.
Present.
Secretary of Treasury G. Wei-Lu Ten, Board Member Charles Brown.
Here.
Board Member Edgar Chase IV.
Present.
Board Member Andrew Nika Morris.
Present.
Board Member Hunter Thomas.
Here.
A quorum is present.
Thank you. I'm Elizabeth.
Giselle, I have two motions, please. Giselle. Ms. Banks?
It looks like we lost Giselle.
I think we lost her, yeah.
Okay.
She's in the... She's in the audience.
Okay, I'm back, everybody. I do apologize. I was switching over from my phone to my computer, so...
That's okay. I just wanted to... I have two motions. The first motion is to amend the agenda to include the financial report.
Okay.
The second motion is to provide the board with an updated resolution from what's in the packet. And I will put that on the screen.
An updated resolution for what we currently have on the agenda, right?
Yes. Yes, we basically provided more detailed information.
Okay, all right, thank you.
It's been approved by council. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we need... Let's go ahead. Can we take these two together or do this separately? I guess separately.
Well, yeah, we'll need to do them separately.
Yeah.
Hey, Giselle.
Yes, uh-huh.
Before we move into the formal agenda, this is the moment where I mentioned I wanted us to do a... I was going to ask if we could do a moment of silence for the former board member, Mr. Lonnie Hewitt. Is this the appropriate time or do you want to do it at the end of the agenda?
No, I want to do it at the beginning of the agenda. So, yes, let's do that now.
Okay, so I was just going to ask that we do a moment of silence for one of our four former board members, Mr. Lonnie Hewitt, who passed, recently passed away, and then also ask Mr. Brown to say a few words after we do a brief moment of silence.
Thank you, Damon.
May I?
Go ahead, Mr. Brown. It's on you.
Yes. I'd like to have the opportunity, I had the opportunity to work with the former chairman, Lonnie Hewitt, as the chairman of the board, myself and, I guess, Wei Lu also had that opportunity. But I'd like to read, if you would allow me, to read a brief tribute from four former, well, current, myself, board members of the authority, Johnny Jones, Aaron Gable, and Chuck Brown. This says, "A tribute, a brief tribute to Lonnie Hewitt. We mourn the passing of our dear, passionate brother and Christian friend Lonnie Hewitt. Our most profound sympathy is extended to his wife and his family. For those who only knew Lonnie casually, please know that he was the human expression of brotherly love and Christian friendship. He extended himself in various phases of life to friends and others with a kind of unforgettable positiveness. Succinctly stated, when he faced a difficult task, he resolved it with a kind of personal ease. Our dear friend was well-known to most, but even better, to a special group of four men called the Posse. The group met originally as members of a certain New Orleans authority, meaning the finance authority of New Orleans, or the New Orleans Home Mortgage Authority, appointed by the city council during the 1990s. After several years of service, they left the authority but remained brothers and friends. The men continued to gather for conversation about what they could do to help each other and the city of New Orleans. They remained ever so conscious of what service they could be to others. Lonnie was always a leader in resolving issues that could affect the lives of others. The Posse will miss our brother and friend. It is with heartfelt sympathy that we, the remaining three Posse members, ask everyone to join us in praying for Lonnie's surviving family. May God bless us all, yours in Christian love, Johnny Jones Jr., Aaron Gable, and Charles H. Brown." That sort of summarizes the gentleman. He was a great, great, great man. As I said, some of the projects that have been standing here in the city of New Orleans for years, the McDonald's on St. Charles Avenue, the Booker T. Washington School is, was just finished in that auditorium. And there's a lot of history that this architect had and a tremendous asset to the authority. As I mentioned, the CMO that we exist on now was primarily with, under his leadership. Bonds were sold way back and a large sum of what we are still using right now today was a result of Lonnie Hewitt and his contribution to the authority. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Brown. That was a perfect tribute to Mr. Hewitt and we certainly thank him for all of his contributions and he will be remembered in the city as a great leader. And so, thank you so much for sharing that personal insight.
Thank you for the opportunity, Mr. Chairman, Vice Chairman.
Thank you, Damon. Okay, if we can get back to the motion to revise the agenda. Is there any... Does someone... Can someone move? To adopt the revised agenda?
It has been revised. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, Mr. Brown, if I may. To the board, there's one more item that needs to be added in that amendment.
Okay.
And that's the selection of officers.
Yes, that is correct.
That needs to be, that's an oversight on my part. That needs to be added as an official agenda item.
Thanks, Damon.
Ms. Vice Chairman, where should we add that? Under item, after item 10, I mean, after item 8?
After item 8, I think would be a good place for it.
Okay.
All right, is there any other additions or amendments that we need to make at this time? Damon, Naj?
None.
Yeah, just the finance report addition, the updated resolution.
Finance report updated resolution and election of officers.
Yes, me.
Okay. Okay, those are the other recommended changes to the agenda. If we could have someone move.
No. Giselle, I'm happy to make a motion. Repeat to me what, so we're adding the officers and what was the second thing?
Naj, can you repeat the...
The second thing, so the first thing is the election of officers. Second one is a motion to add in the finance report. And then the third is the most...
Naj, can I interrupt you? When you say the finance report, you're talking about the minutes from the finance committee or...
No, the actual financials.
The minutes are on the agenda, Wade, but I don't see a actual report.
I mean, isn't the report just, isn't the report part of the minutes or, I don't know?
No, the minutes are from the last meeting. We need to have a current report for this board.
Ah, okay, I apologize. And Naj, what was the third? I apologize for interrupting.
And the third one is in your packet, you have a resolution that has since been revised by council. And so, we'll entertain the updated resolution.
But the...
And that one, Naj, doesn't necessarily need to be included. It's just a, it's an update to the formal resolution itself.
Yes.
But the item itself is on the agenda, stated correct.
So, there's really just two, two, so, okay, so I'll make a motion then to revise and update the agenda to add, I guess, within section eight, other business, election of finance authority, New Orleans officers. And then as a second agenda item to add the the finance report for...
I think we, I thought what was said was that they needed to be taken in turn, not as a group. Was that, did I misunderstand that?
Oh, one at a time? That, you probably...
Yeah. Yeah, no, I'm sorry. Trustee Morris, that was my mistake. I misunderstood what was trying to be accomplished.
Okay.
We can amend the, the motion to amend the agenda, I apologize for the confusion, is one motion. I thought we were trying to get a motion for approval of those items, which should come separately. My apologies.
Gotcha. All right, so I'm sorry, Wade, you can...
No, no, you're right, you're right. You're spot on. Okay, so I'll make a motion to amend the agenda.
I second.
Second.
We just have to vote on it, right?
Does any of this require...
Did we lose, oh, there's, yeah, Giselle Salona, though we lost her again.
Jade, does any of this require public comment before we would vote on these resolutions and approvals and...
Yeah, so, so we typically have the public, submit public comment cards. If, but if, since this is an item, an action item that is being added, then we can certainly accept any, any public comment, if any, on this particular item, if you want to give a couple of seconds for anyone who has a comment on amending the agenda.
Then, then amenders can be, I mean, the minutes can be amended. I mean, the agenda can be amended. Is that correct? I'm just, I'm trying to get my understanding of what we said in the last meeting and now this meeting.
Yes, so, an agenda can be amended, but it has to, it can only be amended with a motion, a second, and a unanimous, the unanimous approval of all board members that are present.
Okay.
Okay. Um, oh, I do apologize. I was kicked off and I had to get back in. I'm having some technology issues. Are we ready to adopt the revised agenda?
So, we got a motion, Wade made a motion, and Edgar and I seconded.
Okay. Thank you, I'm Ajnika. All those in favor of amending the agenda? Please respond by saying aye. Is the opposition? Here and none, agenda is amended.
And then I follow up with a, I guess I'll make a motion to add as a new agenda item, the of officers for the finance authority of New Orleans.
Okay, I probably did that.
Not, we did the other two.
I'm sorry?
We did the first two, not, this, there's, there are, there are three items that needed to be added to the agenda. That's the issues.
And we're just going to do them one at a time, right?
Yeah, no, but you didn't add all three, did you, under the previous motion?
Well, so, let me ask you, did we... Do we, do we have to do each one of these?
No.
No, no, no.
All together, okay, I got, I was confused. Okay, so, let me, let me resubmit this motion, motion to amend the agenda to include the following. One is election with regard to the finance authority officers. Secondly, is to receive the finance report. Then, underneath, I don't think there's a third one, though.
Sorry, I might be miscounting.
Yeah, because Jade, Jade was, is that it's, the, the third one that we discussed is actually, it's already is an agenda item. They just revised.
Revised resolution.
Exactly.
No problem.
Okay, so just, yeah, so just limited to, so the, it's just two.
It's two, yeah.
So, is there...
So, Wade, you need to restate or are we good to go?
Nope, that's the two.
Okay.
I'm good.
All right, thank you.
So, there are two.
Yes.
The resolution and the offices are the two that we're under consideration, no?
No, the report and the officers are the two agenda items we're adding. The resolution's already on the agenda.
Thank you. Let me restate. We just did a simple motion to amend an agenda, to add an election of officers and to add the February finance report. That's it.
Correct.
The new agenda is now adopted. When we get to the resolution, part of the agenda, if we need to accept a motion to accept the revised resolution, we can do that then when we're ready to approve that resolution. Okay? Are we ready to move forward? All right, thank you. All right, new business, presentation?
We're on new business?
Yes.
Is there a presentation? I wanted to add something on the new business, but I'll wait and hear the presentation.
No, there's no new business. No, there's not, there's not any new business to discuss today.
All right, well, let me say this. Because we, at the last Finance and Investment Committee meeting, we have briefly want the board to know that there is going to be consideration of our assisting homeless, the homeless community in the city of New Orleans. And the new business will probably come up at our next meeting. A proposal for homeless children under our communities' support fund. That fund has been not, it has, we have not been able to get that to the community as we thought we could because it's, it's, well, it's because of, we have a board member here that has $25 million for rental assistance. And I think that's a wonderful thing for the city of New Orleans and I'm very, very happy and excited about that. But we'd like to, under new business, consider redirecting some of those resources to the homeless. And I thought I'd just mention it at this point, but the staff will be looking at it and touching base with the five council-matic districts which comprise of six homeless shelters for children. And I'd like to mention them. One, Salvation Army. Two, the New Orleans Women and Children Shelter. Three, the Bethel Colony House Shelter. Four, the Baptist Colony Shelter. Five, on Clay, I mean, on Canal, Canal, I'm sorry, Canal and Jeff Davis Parkway, which is called the Hakers House. And those are the five council-matic districts. And there's one other that serves the metropolitan area, which would be, I would think, represented by the at-large membership, which is called Metro, Metro Center, or the Metropolitan Center, which is located on Jeff Highway. But it services the New Orleans as well as the Jefferson Parish community. So, I just wanted to mention this under new business at this point in time and allow our staff to take this up. They have stated that they would like to touch base with these facilities as well as come back with something that I'd like to recommend to the board at our next meeting, if that's possible.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. I'm sure that the staff will work on this and present this in committee meetings for us to take up and then act as a full board.
Yeah, and I would like to, I would also like to reassure ourselves that the, before we abandon the program, that it's very necessary. We make sure that it is properly designed before we move to something else. So, I'd like to have that conversation to understand what the problems are with the original concept. And, yeah, that's, those two things, the fact that there is now additional funding being made available does not negate the fact that for the last nine months, there has been no real money available and we should have gotten through that very, very easily.
Wade.
I think the staff would be the...
We should respond to that. Wait, 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 wait.
We're not...
Thank you all, thank you all for your comments. I need to move forward on the agenda. We will take your comments into consideration, Mr. Brown and Mr. Morris. And we will have the staff to dig into this program a little bit forward, a little bit more as we move forward, and we will look at still running maybe two programs, right, and not abandoning one.
No, never, never abandon.
What the possibilities are. I don't want to stress the staff too thin, but we'll look at the possibilities. Thank you.
I was, never my intention to say we'd ever abandon the Community Pathway Program. Never.
Thank you. Approval of December 10th, 2020, board meeting minutes. Have you all had a chance to review the minutes? If you've had a chance to review, Naj has it up on the screen now. I will accept the motion.
I'll move for approval of the minutes.
Thank you, Board Member Chase. Is there a second? Are those in favor, Slama saying aye? In the opposition? Okay, this are approved. Okay, we need to, January 19, 21 minutes. And those are all up on the screen.
I'll make a motion to approve them.
Thank you, Wade. And is there a second?
Second.
Chase, okay. Thank you so much. It's been moved a second. I was in favor, Slama saying aye. All right, any opposition? Thank you. The minutes are approved for January 19, 2021 meeting. We'll move on to our committee reports, Finance and Investments Report. Mr. Badger?
Thank you. Good afternoon, board members. So, I will, for the financial report, provide a market update and then move into the financial status report. So, as it relates to the market, you know, recent economic data and recent movements have shown some possible signs of improvement. We've actually seen the 10-year Treasury bond at its highest level in almost a year. This could be an indication of just market sentiment and market direction. It seems to be driven by, you know, the decline in virus cases, the rise in the vaccinations. You know, the government plan is to distribute an additional 200 million vaccines. And then also the proposed stimulus bill that has a chance of getting approved fairly soon. And so, then there's the feds, which the markets have been embracing their recent policies in their recent meeting where they said that they believe, you know, there's still a lot of downside risk to the pandemic, but they're committed to providing support to continuing purchasing, you know, large-scale bonds and assets to keep interest rates low. And then they also support the stimulus measures that's on the table at the moment. On the economic front, unemployment came down slightly in January to 6.3. It was 6.7 in December. That's down tremendously from eight, last eight. That's down tremendously from eight last April where it was 14.7. But it still remains, it's almost double from where it was at the same time last year. So that decline, it kind of understates the extent of the weakness in the labor market. And then on the same note, there's the consumer spending that bounced back a little bit, but there's still the service sector and and that tourism and entertainment sector, which is strong in New Orleans, of course, that just kind of remains subdued. So hopefully, you know, the increase in vaccines and the stimulus will be a turning point there. On the municipal bond side, the issuance has taped off in the prior week, but the demand still remains strong. Mortgage rates have flattened. Last month, we saw a jump in mortgage rates. But they still remain at historic lows, and they probably will remain there for a while as the feds mentioned that they're going to continue their asset purchase program and keep the rates low. So we're clearly not out the water yet, but it seems like we're kind of slowly working our way out of that environment of uncertainty. And, you know, that we've been talking about almost the last year and that volatility. So as long as we continue to see these cases decline and these vaccines increase and we get the stimulus passed that can channel some of these funds to the struggling households and businesses, we should see a possible market turn. Any questions, comments on the market update? If not, I will proceed with the financial status report.
Oh, Byron, I'm sorry. I just, I wanted to make sure that we were talking about, make sure we're highlighting the fact that here in New Orleans, we've got folks that are disproportionately impacted by the good news. You know, women are losing their employment at an unprecedented rate. African Americans and Latinos are not being rehired at the same rate. And so we've got a... We can talk about the larger market numbers, but we also need to make sure we're mindful about what is happening in New Orleans.
Sure. Thank you. Any other comments, questions? All right, so what you see is the financial status report as of December. The date, so this is the annual numbers. And so overall, actual revenue came in $250,000 to a budget of $9,000. So actual revenue exceeded $11% of $23,000. On the expense side, actual expenses came in at 1.5 to a budget of 1.9. So there's favorability there of $382,000. This provides a look into the actual revenue components, and that favorability is driven by the other income and multifamily income, where we've seen, we've closed on two pilot transactions. That's those transactions we've talked about that... We talked about closing in December. They did close, and so we saw that revenue come and happened to report that we actually were closing on a pilot transaction today, the Chefman Tour Project. So that will generate some revenue for the month of February as well. So we've closed on three pilot deals so far. The next page looks at the expenses. The trend remains the same in terms of the expense buckets that's driving the favorability. Drivers and benefits, the marketing, advertising, and administrative expenses are the drivers here. There is the general operating and building expense line where you see there's an overage actual to budget, and that is primarily related to the Community Support Fund expenses that, of course, weren't expected, and we didn't budget. We didn't, of course, have it in a budget. So that is that 49,000, or roughly 43,000 of that 49 is related to that. Next page provides a historical look back of our revenues and expenses. Our revenue trending, that there's no outliers in terms of volatility. There is a lift in December in the revenues line as a result of those pilot transactions. On the inside, it lifted up in November and December, just as a result of time Yes, sir.
Okay. I'm sorry. I'll wait until you finish your report. I wanted to ask a couple of questions about two pilots and two pilot programs and one activity that we had discussed at our last meeting. I'll wait.
Okay. Next page looks at our pathways fund. Year-to-date, we generated $164,000 in revenue on the expense side, $50,000. So there's net revenues of $50,000 in our pathways fund. Actually, about balance sheet comparison, nothing really to report here in terms of the balance remains stable, given a minimal activity.
Byron, could you go back to that yearly? The monthly slide?
Yes, for the month-to-month.
Yeah.
Page is back now. I'm sorry, page four.
Yeah.
You had it right, Naj. Page four.
There we go. Okay, thank you. I'm just looking at trends and just... Thank you, Naj and Byron.
Okay, so Naj, you can advance to page seven. This provides a look at our cash and cash equivalents. Year-end, we're at 10.8, which is down from 10.9 in a prior month, and that's just movement from our net expenses month over month. And that concludes my report on the financial stuff. Mr. Brown?
Just a couple of questions. You serve on the committee that approves a lot of the, all of the pilot programs. And I know that there's two that are in District B that are under consideration. And I wanted to give some idea, since I've heard about it, whether or not you could give me some brief status of where they stand. That is the Borden Project on Barone Street, one. And the second, with the neighborhood housing services, or maybe this is not the proper time to take this up. Maybe I should take it up with the executive director's report. But there is a project that's pending in a 4,500 block of Phoret Street with the Neighborhood Housing Service and a mixed-use property, and I think that's a great type of project to consider. When you look at affordable housing above a mixed-use commercial structure at the bottom, can you give me some idea of what's going on with those two projects, please?
I think we talked about this in our Programs Committee, that we wanted to make sure the staff presented a dashboard to let the board members know where these projects are. And so that would be something that would be discussed in the Programs Committee section, Commissioner Brown, and not Finance, but yes, and then that the staff is aware that we want to get that kind of update.
Okay, so I can, in other words, I can go and view on YouTube a discussion of those projects that are pending in councilmatic districts. Is that what you're saying, Commissioner Morris?
Well, I'm saying, one, we can talk about it in the Programs Committee area, that they are going to be preparing that for us. But it's not, that's not Byron's responsibility. It's something that falls under Programs, and so that's where we should be talking about it.
Say, under Program, meaning under the Program Committee or under the Program Operation?
The agenda where we're going to talk about the Program Committee minutes, and we're going to get the Program Committee's report, which is where this would get discussed.
Then I can look at...
Yes.
I can look at the Program Committee meeting. And I can get some idea of what the status of the Borden Project is on Barone Street, one. That's what I was questioning. And the second about the Phoret Street, because there was an excellent presentation last week, if you... I mean, I'm sorry, last month, by a young lady from that project. She made an excellent presentation. And I would suspect that once she made that presentation, Byron and Damon, she followed up because we're also considering putting a site office at that facility. From what I viewed, because I wasn't at the last meeting, from what I viewed on YouTube, that the authority is considering that as a possible site for a site office, and we've been talking about that for some time. I just... I'm sorry.
That was an excellent presentation. You're right, Mr. Brown. I think, Damon, are you planning on covering that in your Programs report? Can you give us a standard? Okay.
We actually don't have an update on that particular project. It just fell behind some other priorities, so we have to follow up with that, the team that did that presentation. We just don't have anything to report to the board. And furthermore, Mr. Brown, most developers that come to us, let me back up. All developers that come to us and reach the board most times have completed an application and gone through the process. The presentation was brought to the board because it involves us having a physical office. So it's a little different than a development project that we're seeing. But at the same time, the same developer put in an application to receive a pilot. Yeah, they did put in an application to receive a pilot, but that wasn't the subject of last month's conversation. So the two different discussions happening with that particular developer, we don't have an update for the board.
Site office is being one, and a developing project on the mixed-use as another.
That is correct.
Very good. I got it. And I'll be looking forward to looking at the YouTube version of a presentation. I mean, it was excellent. I just wondered about the follow-up. That's all. Sorry if I took up some time.
Well, you're good, Mr. Brown. Thank you. Thank you. I agree. Excellent presentation, so I would need to follow up on that. So I really appreciate your input and your engagement. Any other questions for Mr. Badger, board member? Okay. Hearing none. I thank you for your report, Byron. We'll move on to the Programs Committee Report.
As it relates, as it relates to Programs, we provided an update on Sustainable Developer Program. Mr. Badger covered that in his report. The fact that we've now closed on three pilot projects. We have many more in the pipeline upwards of $500 million worth of projects in our pipeline. We are scrubbing that list to make sure we know which ones are real and which ones are not quite ready yet to gain approval from us. So we're going to continue that process and keep in mind, boy, as we accumulate more pilots, that revenue turns over for a 40-year period. So the three projects that we've talked about, there's an upfront fee, a closing fee that Finance New Orleans receives, and then there's an ongoing pilot payment tied to the same revenue stream that the city receives. So we have an arrangement with the city. We've been talking to the city. But as it accumulates, that means more revenue generation for Finance New Orleans and more opportunity for us to securitize bonds, to invest in other projects. It's, you know, something good for our long-term financial sustainability. And we also discussed the Green Mortgage Program. I'm sorry, Mr. Brown, do you have a question about the Sustainable Development?
No question, but I'm glad you're going into the American Green Bank. I was, I know we had an excellent presentation that was made to the board by regarding the Rule Energy Safety Program, so to say, just, I'm sorry, no question about that one. Would you proceed, please?
Yes, and then we also discussed the rollout of our overall strategic plan and the programs that have come out of that new strategic plan, like the Green Mortgage Program, which will be released in March. We're beginning to work with some homeowners as test case or test subjects for that new program. It's taken us a while to get it off the ground, but we learned along the way that there are many moving parts to it, and there's a great impact that can come out of this, too. So the program has a much, much bigger potential than we originally thought when we started this process two to three years ago. So I'm happy to say that although it has taken a while, and R and D has given us a lot of perspective on how to implement green programs, and we should shorten that timeframe of idea to market as we move ahead. We also discussed the Community Support Fund. The fact that things are slowing down a little bit for us as we talk, as it relates to our production or our contribution through the Community Support Fund. But the simple reason that we see is our contribution is just lower. The amount of money that an individual or family can get from us is just lower than some of the other sources. So we tend to fall to the back of the line, but people still find our program useful and needed. So we're going to keep moving, moving ahead. That program isn't even a year old yet. So we have a lot of learning to do and a lot of development for the life cycle of that particular program. And then lastly, we did introduce two of our newest staff members to the committee, and I'll introduce them now to the board and ask them just to say a few words. Kelly Schmidt is our new Director of Program Operations, and Mashika Baptiste is our new Director of Innovation and Technology. And I'll point out Innovation and Technology is a new concept for government agencies like ours, but we've been applauded and actually, you know, generated a lot of interest in things that we're doing because we're moving in that direction. So something that I thought was important for our growth and trajectory. So we went out and found some individuals that had a diverse set of experiences that can help us grow and reach the goals that we've set out in the strategic plan. So Kelly and Mashika, please briefly introduce yourselves to the board.
Thanks, Damon. Hi, my name is Kelly Schmidt. As Damon indicated, I am the new Director of Program Operations. I come from Hibernian National Bank slash Capital One for 27 years as their Senior Director of Operations, heavily involved in governance, compliance, process improvement, efficiency, and organizational structure. I am extremely excited to be a part of this organization. I'm looking forward to meeting each and every one of you along and working alongside of y'all. I am currently digging into our current programs and developing the future programs to ensure that we are well-secured and documented within our processes. So thank you.
Thank you, Kelly and Mashika.
Good afternoon. I'm Mashika Baptiste, the new Director of Innovation and Technology. Previously, I was with Hyatt Regency New Orleans the last seven years, overseeing productivity, guest satisfaction, Six Sigma initiatives. I was also on the Hyatt Global Advisory Board to focus on process improvement and guest satisfaction for all of our hotel operations. Previous to that, I was Vice President of Retail Banking and E-Commerce for Liberty Bank. I focused on branch operations and bringing new technology onboard for the bank. I'm happy to be here and I look forward to working with each and every one of you.
Thank you, Kelly and Mashika. And to the rest of the board, that concludes my comments for the Program Committee Report. Do we have any questions?
I have a couple of comments, if I could.
Mr. Brown?
The... The, um. Green, green program, the green, American Green Bank program, that was a presentation made to us. Where there are nineteen banks that are involved. And, uh, by Alex. Uh, Craigers, I believe. And there was a bank consortium. And it was a federal bill pending at that time, can you give us the status of where that stands and? He also mentioned some possible grants that would be available to us?
Yes, the, uh, American Green Bank Consortium is. A group that has formed over the last few years to support green banks. Uh, green financial institutions, most of, most of those institutions are, uh, public agencies, some are nonprofits. But all have a mission to advance sustainability, affordability, equity. Uh, and time protection throughout economies, uh, throughout cities, uh, across the country. Um, so to put it in context, Mr. Brown, this is the, uh, the green bank equivalent to NALFA. So we're still a member of NALFA and NALFA is the trade or association for housing finance agencies. Uh, which at present has, uh, over a hundred and fifty members or over a hundred, up to a hundred and fifty members. Uh, and then you also have other organizations like the Council of Development Finance Agencies, which also has hundreds of members. Um, so there are many, many finance authorities that are around already, they've been around for forty years or more. And green banks are very new animals, so there are only nineteen official green banks in the country and we're, we're one of them. Uh, so we were invited into that group. Part of what they're helping us do is, uh, develop internally as well as. Have a collective agenda on a national stage so that we can push legislation. Uh, that helps all of us to advance our missions, um, so now that we have President Biden in office. Uh, he, he is. Um, on all accounts from all indications, he's, uh, gonna be very pro-climate or pro-green. And there are many, um, pieces of legislations that are out right now, so the American Green Bank Consortium is working to. Um, advance the clean energy or the Clean Energy Accelerator. Act, which is, uh, the one that they reported on to us, but there's no, been no movement, there's no official approval just yet.
Because they've mentioned, they've mentioned forty billion dollars, it, it's already passed the House. Twice.
Yes.
So with the new administration, uh, please alert us to how that. Uh, what's going on with that legislation because there's a great possibility since we are part of that nineteen. Uh, uh, member bank, that we can take advantage of those resources. Because they're not talking about, uh. Millions of dollars, they're talking about forty billion dollars and, uh, uh. Uh, please keep us abreast of that and, uh, keep, uh, us alerted to that, uh. Bill and those bills and our being active and getting some of those resources once they are made available.
Yes, sir.
Second item, uh, the green bank, you mentioned the green bank, I mean, the, the, I mean, the green, the green mortgage program. What about the idea we had talked about some time ago of using some of the pathway properties? As an example for the community to take a look at. In particular, I've always, I've always been, I, I visited the sites about a year ago. And, uh, we sold a lot of those properties, but there's one in particular that's right down from Southern University, you know, Press Drive. That I think would be an excellent, an excellent place where we could take. Put that out with a contractor. Implement all of the programs, not, not program, but all of the, uh. All of the items that are. Projected to save energy and to save costs and to. And to, and to be the kind of property for the future could be demonstrated in that project. And, uh, I thought that would be an excellent place really for us setting up a site office too. Uh, could we consider doing something like that with the board, discuss something like that?
Yeah, Mr. Brown, that's still a priority for us to utilize any property that we own. Uh, to stimulate the development of new sustainable homes. The first step in that process is to launch the green mortgage program. Because the green mortgage program will be the funding mechanism for the end users of those properties that we develop. So it, the Housing Innovation Fund is what you're speaking of and that is a top priority. Um, it's something where we're looking to make movement on toward the middle of this year, third quarter, second quarter, third quarter. Um, and so we wanted to fir- focus our energy first on the green mortgage program, so we'll, we'll continue to provide updates. On moving those properties, there are some things we can do in the meantime to get that program prepared. Uh, but the staff has been completely focused on the green mortgage and sustainable development programs.
And in demonstration, we've got a pretty large staff there, you know, eighty percent of our. Our budget is, is, is spent on, on manpower to associate someone to, to take on. That project, that is a demonstration project to show the community. That this is what it can look like if you invest in this type of mortgage. Uh, that's, that's, that's where my head is just as one board member.
Yes, uh, thanks, Mr. Brown, um. And thanks, uh, Damon, uh, for that, uh, report, um. Uh, thank you, uh, to the new staff for your introductions, um, uh, we look forward to working with you all. Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Is that all you had?
Uh, I have, I have one other thing that, uh. Uh, I think we, we have a, a couple of other agenda items that, uh. I'll, I'll address it at that point in time because.
Yes. I mean, I mean, is that all you had on the program?
That's all I had. Because, uh, I, I'm waiting on the staff to come forward with, uh, the, uh. Oh, I do want to mention something that a board member said. That we would be. Taking away from the path. The Community Development Program, that would never be the case, uh, uh. With a homeless children, Community Support Fund.
Okay, alright, thank you.
This should be expanded, I just wanted to say that, please directly say that, because we. At this particular point in time, I've said before. We have a very good budget and I'm all for our budget, but. We don't have any resources in there at this present time for soft second mortgages. And, and, and I think that, that the, um, executive director and the staff should have mentioned the fact. That, for example, that program that was, that, that on Parrot Street. It has eighteen units. That could be affordable housing units above it, but we have to have the resources. On a side, put aside for a project like that, and we can do something with affordable housing. Because we project on our ten-year master plan. At least fifteen units. A month. Which is a hundred and fifty houses a year. And right now, I'm not sure if we're meeting that goal.
I think, yeah, I think. Um. I'll let, I'll let Damon, uh, answer that, um, but I do think, um, uh, this speaks to. To the dashboard reporting on, uh, um. Uh, that we kind of talked about, uh. This will be able to help us to measure our, uh, progress on to goals, but, um, I'll let Damon. Uh, speak on that and I don't disagree with you at all, Mr. Brown, so, um, Damon.
Mr. Brown, I just want to make sure I address your question properly, can you ask one more time?
Okay. I'll go in our ten-year plan. Is roughly a hundred and fifty properties. A year.
Yes.
Which calculates out at, let's say, ten houses a month. Let's say twelve houses a month, or more like fifteen, fifteen houses a month. We're now in February, January has passed us, we're now February. How many properties have we done?
We haven't done any, we haven't done any because we have, when we say a hundred and fifty mortgages, we mean a hundred and fifty green mortgages. So we, we haven't done one green mortgage yet, but we, as I mentioned earlier. In the programs committee meeting and a few moments ago, we do have some test cases that staff is beginning to do the work with. And they represent our first green mortgage, uh, program closings. I don't know how long they're gonna take because these are the first ones and there's some extra, extra steps involved. But otherwise, we're going to begin marketing this program very heavily. Uh, over the next couple of months, so we do expect production to pick up, I know it's gonna take some time. Uh, but we, we're laser focused on getting the programs off the ground. And then we'll be able to focus in on turning those numbers in every month.
Well, if we get those two done, I think that's wonderful as a start. On our goal for the two months, which is thirty. So two as compared to thirty, but here again, if we had an example in our community. Where a person could go and physically go and see. And a product that's being proposed in our green mortgage program, I think that would be a tremendous thing. But I, I, I. There are two in the pipeline and, and our goal would be thirty at this particular point.
Well, we, we're gonna try to move the numbers up as quickly as possible. A hundred and fifty is a, uh, is a goal that we've set, we think that's a moderate number. That's a, a production level that the agency has reached in the past, it's, it's gone beyond that number in the past. So it's just a, a number for us to, to get ourselves recalibrated. But truthfully, the market for this type of product, we think is much bigger. Uh, and we think, we think the authority has a lot more potential than. A hundred and fifty mortgages, but that, that's just our initial target.
Then as one board member I need to ask, is there anything? Is there anything that we as a board can do? To, uh, move this forward at a. At a, a, an accelerated pace. Is there anything we can do?
Yes, I think mainly it's, uh, leveraging your personal networks and contacts so that everybody knows that this program is available. You know, mu- much of the activity we get now is word of mouth, people just finding out through the, through the grapevine in the community. Uh, that we have a green mortgage program available, so. Um, right now, it's not, uh, not as conventional as we would like it in terms of how we're attracting people. Uh, but I, I think if the board. Could leverage their personal networks in addition to the marketing. That we're getting ready to push out and, uh, you know, using that marketing as a, a conversation starter. That's where we can use your help right now.
Okay. So Damon, we'd also like to, with, um, we've got some funding that we've been putting out on the street. For small landlords and we're having some events to, to, we'd love to highlight what you guys have as well. Um, as an alternative for people, so, um. If, if, um, my team can meet with your team to talk about like integration and then maybe even featuring you all. Um, we're doing an event this week that we're highlighting, uh, but we're gonna do some more. Um, over in the next month or so, so that we, we would happily include, um, y'all's materials.
Thank you, we will follow up on that note.
Okay.
Commissioner, Commissioner Morris, is there any way that you all could put up a, a demonstration? Facility, of, of, of properties?
I heard commissioner, but I wasn't sure who was.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was asking the commissioner, you said that you were gonna be meeting with the staff. Uh, I was just asking a question since it is a city and an operating agency. Is there any way that that agency, uh. Could cooperate with the. Finance New Orleans. And, and, and put up some demonstration houses for individuals to take advantage of.
So, yeah, I mean, I, I don't know, we couldn't do that because we're a, a nonprofit, but maybe that's something that we could look at, yeah.
Okay, well. Great, I, I think you, uh, I, I hope you look at it and I hope it, 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 it meets. The, uh, approval of both agencies. And that we see some physical properties that we can visit, uh. And, 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 and then encourage, I guess. Each of us individually, we represent a consumatic district, so we can. We can, uh, at least help promote what the two of you as. Carousers in housing for the city of New Orleans can do. I'd be more than happy to do that.
Excellent ideas. Uh, uh, thank you so much, uh, Mr. Brown, uh, for your, uh, input and for always pushing us. Um, to do more and do better, uh, for our citizens of New Orleans, thank you again. Uh, Mr. Byron, uh, are we on executive management reports?
Yes. And a few board, a few board members have requested that we provide, uh. An updated organizational chart. And, uh, it's in your packet, it's a, a new org and accountability chart. Uh, it's not an active, uh, or representation of the active members of the staff. But it does lay out the new organizational framework. Um, that we're operating under and we can also share with you the, um. The chart that shows the active position.
Yeah, that's what I was looking for with this, I just didn't, couldn't tell from this, uh, what positions are open.
Okay, well, I, I can walk you through it just so you can understand it and then we can follow up with the. Exact roles that are, um. That are occupied and vacant.
Are you gonna give us names?
Yes, those names on that, on the report that I mentioned.
Okay, should, should we start writing? Because we got the job rank categories.
I'm sorry.
Damon, also, just as a follow-up, um. We discussed at the executive committee, uh, providing a, um. A dashboard of how these positions impact the budget, so that information will be provided quarterly. Um, just moving forward and just so that you guys know.
Well, I mean, I think we'd like to see it certainly more often than quarterly, but definitely when there are new hires.
Yes.
So I'd like, I'd like, I'd like to see the dashboard as a, as a result of. Uh, we, we met two staffers today and I understand that there are, uh, additional hires to come, so I'd like to see that. Now, as soon as possible, um, yeah.
Yes, we can share that information and. All, all of the new hires, just so the board understands, all of the new hires have been. Within the, the amount budgeted for twenty twenty-one. So we're still within our, um, approved budget and we plan to stay within that amount. And, and as we, as we mentioned before, we plan to. Come back to you and let you know when, uh, things are changing, so we'll, we'll provide more of a monthly update for you.
Uh, thank you, Damon, I'm gonna thank you, uh, that, uh, that was my appreciation for the process. Uh, we knew that we had some concerns going in, um, to this year's, uh, budget. And so. And trying to, uh, balance out, um, needs and expansion with. You know, uh, current, uh, budgetary constraints, you know, um, we really want this, uh, information. And we're making decisions, you know, about, uh, budget and make sure that we are just, um. Informed. On the budgetary, uh, impact, uh, so that we won't have to, you know. Ask these questions on a, a continuous basis, so we can just get that, um, on a monthly basis for right now. Until things kind of stabilize and we can probably go back to quarterly, uh, at some point.
I understand, we will.
Thank you.
Am I to understand, just wanted to make sure to understand. In the packet, I see a job rank category. And I see executive director, assistant director, coordinator, analyst, specialist and assistant. All their names that go with these job titles.
So, yes, Mr. Brown, let me explain what's going on here, this is a, uh. We spent the last few months of the year, um, really focused in on. we spent the last few months of the year um really focused in on HR and organizational development. A few things we were missing as an organization. Uh we you know, we have good bones in terms of our policies and uh an employee handbook. Some things that we've had for a long time, but there are some uh advancements that we needed to make as it relates to our organizational structure. So uh this is a new model that was developed along with some HR consultants, uh management consultants, just the internal team. Particularly the executive team spent time uh figuring out what we need to look like and how we need to operate. And then not only that, this is also about individual development. Anytime we bring somebody into the organization. We always tell them that their uh individual growth is always a part of our concern. Um but the the model we were operating in previously did not uh truly highlight the fact that individual uh growth and development is important to us as an organization. So we just sought to modernize our approach uh to job ranks and job categories within an organization. Um so we created a framework or hierarchy of jobs um that go all the way from the executive level to the assistant level. And also what it does for staff is um give them a precise identification of where they are as it relates to um the reporting structure of the organization. But also where they rank individually, where they are in their own personal progressions. Um and it also creates a path forward for each of those and those individuals. So to answer your question about this particular slide, Mr. Brown, um we can have multiple individuals within each of these categories. This is just meant to lay out um the the particular rank for everybody or anybody within the organization.
Okay. Well, I know we have, we have a uh we have a as I said, a large portion of our budget is spent for manpower. And I was looking at these two charts and 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 I guess they are line and staff. Organiz- organizational and accountability charts for the finance New Orleans. Itself as an agency. So at some point. Would you just identify for me or just send it, just email it to me? The job rank categories that you have listed here, just and put some names on them. And your organization and accountability chart that you have here. It it uh put some names on not all positions that have been filled at this point. But where there are names that could go on these that that they could be uh given to given to the board, given to myself.
Yes, sir. I understand. Naj, can you go? I'm sorry, Mr. Brown. I wanted to continue explaining to the board this this chart. It may answer some of your questions. Naj, can you go to the next slide, please, the next page? So to the board, we developed a a new organizational and accountability chart. We intentionally put the word accountability in because most R charts just show name, position uh and reporting structure. But the intent of this R chart is to also show accountability. And it's to show the different areas of the organization that are um that accord that accord to our our function. So it's slightly different than the the chart that we've been operating under, but yeah, we consulted with some HR firms, we consulted with other green banks and housing finance agencies about some of the changes they're making to their R chart. And what's the best way for us to move as an organization, as a mo- a modern organization? Um so we developed five areas of competency. Finance and capital markets, innovation and technology. Program operations, program development and community engagement. Um you still see that we have uh executive level positions. Um myself as CEO and there's been a change to Byron and Bianca's roles as a as we've had to a- a- again, adjust for this new R organizational model. A lot of what they're doing day to day is saying is the same, but um you know, the titles will change to reflect their uh their actual day to day. So Byron currently serves as our chief business officer. Um and Bianca is who's out this week. She is going to begin the process of developing a compliance office for finance New Orleans. So that's a big missing component of our operations right now. We're we're lacking on compliance and we need to deal with it as soon as possible. So we uh we received some guidance about how do we set up compliance and um you know, the best thought was that we we should have some independent compliance function that uh is a part of the team, but also provides the board with some clarity about how we operate and whether or not we're doing everything right. But each of these areas is is meant to serve a a specific function, dynamic function within the organization. There's also a method to the names of these groups. Um there's a process for innovation. There's a process for bringing new ideas to life. Um and we don't have a formal process. I would say we've been um flying the plane as we build it, as the saying goes. But we we want to do better than that. We deserve to or the community deserves for us to have a more organized and intentional process. So that's what this new org and accountability chart is about. Um and as you can see, there directors, coordinators, specialists and analysts under each group. Uh and we will provide you with a chart that shows the exact positions that are filled out. This is just a framework for the organization. So you know, we can have as many people in these groups as necessary or as little as necessary. But it's meant to give us a structure moving ahead, especially as we go on recruit people. Um and we try to narrow in on everybody's roles and responsibilities. So that there's no confusion. We can be as efficient as possible um and that we're always putting our best ideas and execution forward. Any questions from the board on this chart?
The organizational and accountability chart that I'm looking at, uh the accountability, does it include the board of trustees? At some point?
Yeah, that was a comment you gave to us, Mr. Brown, and I'll make sure it's added um to an updated version of this chart.
I've never seen an organization chart that didn't have the board of trustees at the top of it. That's a that's a new one on me. Okay? And uh also, if I count these positions, that's about thirty jobs. If there was one person assigned to each one of these tasks. Looks like to me there'll be a staff of about thirty. What is your staff at now, number wise?
We're at twelve at the moment.
So I don't think this is, these are, I might be reading it wrong and that I'm glad Commissioner Brown asked the question. I presumed that the section topics were just that, not positions. And that the the director right? That's the posi- that's one, that's those, the four underneath are the positions.
That's right. That's right.
Ah, okay. Thank you. Fifteen, gotcha. Reporting to the director, right, Andre?
Uh, looks like it, yeah. So there, so you, so there, the reading is right, Damon. You've got one, two, three, five, six direct, seven, direct, sorry, eight direct reports. As you count the chief compliance officer.
Well, the the director's actual report would be chief business officer.
Oh, okay then. So yeah, so that make that makes sense. Uh.
Okay.
So then, yeah, so then you got three. Yeah, okay.
Yes.
So yeah, it might be helpful if um maybe like I I would, I I appreciate this, uh but I think we do need something a little more traditional with lines and things like that. And maybe we could have like a little narrative to make sure everybody understands what all the different departments are, but something a little bit more conventional, just director, um finance and capital markets and that person's name. Um or or if it's vacant and um and then like a little narrative so that we understand what everybody's doing. Um I think that, yeah, because this is a, I think that this is uh airing on the side of giving us more information is shouldn't be the wrong, but sometimes it can be.
Okay, I understand board members. We'll make the correction and send it out to the board.
Okay, with those names, right?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, um everyone. Uh and thanks, Damon, for providing this information. Um this is helpful to go along with a supplemental piece that you're going to give us. So thanks again. Where's my agenda? Okay. All right, um I think we are at executive session. Uh we already did new staff introductions. Um is there a need for executive session? I don't believe so.
No, not today.
So uh we have other business and then uh this is going to be the resolution that we spoke about at the beginning of the uh meeting. Um this is a resolution to add chief business officer to Liberty Bank account, and I believe that we have a revised resolution. Correct.
Yes.
What's the revised resolution? I'm sorry.
Revised resolution is being presented now.
Okay. Am I shit? I'm seeing on the screen.
I've got a question.
Go ahead, Wade.
The the, I think it's the procurement policy. I don't, there's there's some other related I know policies that um may need to be revised. So I guess the point being is is here, we want to allow one in group two.
Who'd allow what? I'm sorry, you broke up a little bit, Wade.
I I apologize. Um so we want to revise this to add. So currently, who can, who who has bank signing authority?
Has it changed from where we, you know, I haven't been on the board in some time. All signatures of items over ten thousand dollars uh was signed by the secretary treasurer of the board. And and it's my understanding that this changed. Was there a particular reason why that was changed?
Yeah, Chuck, I mean, I can't go into what was done in the past. I what what we can talk about is what's currently in effect. I I don't have the policy in front of me. Basically, we created a procurement policy. It's pretty robust um that that has layers of of activity as well as uh monetary amounts. And obviously, the more involved, the more serious it requires, you know, higher up signature authority.
Yeah, and Wade, hey Wade, this is Jade and I apologize. I I am now in the car and no longer uh in front of my computer.
Right.
Um but I will, we'll go back and take a a a um another look at it. But the procurement policy focuses in on um the process for procurement, right? And this this resolution is strictly for who who has the ability, for example, to sign a check. Right? Or who has the ability to find an instrument um that is required for the bank um specifically. And so um
I don't, I don't know about that, Jade, though. Um I don't, I don't know about that because I mean, it's, you're talking about the policy deals with obligating the institution. Now, you're thinking in terms of procurement, but here, I mean, it's already you're you're obviously obligating the institution. I think they're tied. I mean, I could be wrong, Jade.
Yeah, I'll I'll listen. We'll go back and double check it. So for example, I I I want us to make sure we're distinguishing who has um or who is required, for example, to approve a contract or sign a contract versus who has the ability to sign a physical check. Right? And so aga- again, procurement is about the procurement of goods and services and not about
Right. So let me ask you though, so this should at least be harmonious with the procurement policy or should, or if it's not, then we need to revise the procurement policy.
Yeah, I mean, I don't have it in front of me to the best of my knowledge. So yeah, I don't have it in front of me, Wade. Um to the best of my knowledge, though, this isn't, this is not covered in our procurement policy, but I'll go back and double check it. Um and I I also, I know Vitra is also on the line, so she happens to have it in front of her. Um I'll get her to send me a quick message on it. But to my recollection, the the check signing authority is not in the procurement policy. Now, maybe it may be some, to your point, it may be in another policy. It may be in your financial controls or something like that.
Yeah, it could be. That's the problem. I just can't remember.
Yeah.
Because we have like an investment policy. I don't know. I just can't remember where it might be.
Yeah, we'll 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 double check.
Yes, I just to recap, it would be useful is just to identify any relevant existing policies, procedures. So that's where we stand and then compare the proposed resolution in light of that. And it may, it may have no whatsoever. Um it may not. Um and then um and then it allows for, I guess, an informed, more informed discussion.
Wade, are you suggesting that we table this until those actions are taken?
I don't, I don't feel comfortable.
Okay, well.
I mean, I'm not being hard, am I being hard headed? I don't know. I'm I'm pulling up the policy now, but it's long.
No, Damon, you can chime in. I don't think that this is something, what, let me, let me back up. So the original intent of this resolution was to add um Byron as the uh with the the functioning CFO of the organization to get, provide him with the ability um to have signature authority as he should. Um what was it before you and the reason why the resolution changed was because on- once you adopt a resolution to um add someone as a signatory, you kind of have to restate everyone who's a- authorized to do so. Otherwise, it negates anything that came before it. And so that was the change that Naj um presented to you all in terms of the the change in resolution. I don't know, Damon, you would have to speak up on the timing and whether it's absolutely necessary to move forward. If so, we can make some adjustment um to some of the language in the resolutions to remove the um to remove the threshold amounts that are stated in the resolution. Um and just move forward with, you know, a signature authority. But I again, I don't know that it's it's super time sensitive, but I defer to that.
Uh this is mainly needed for monthly financial operations. Um so President Byron doesn't have access to the account to get all information necessary to update documents and it requires me to step in at times. Um so this is simply doing what was done on other accounts. It had not been done um for the Liberty Bank account where we where he was provided access. So this is more so about access and uh in terms of procurement. Um there are many occasions that have happened lately where we've needed an additional check signer. Um because I didn't have the authority to go over a certain amount. So we have processes in place for when checks fall within or above certain thresholds. Um you know, the purpose of this was mainly to provide more access. So Byron, also, please step in here and and indicate what's going on.
I I want to tell me, Damon, before we get into that part, I understand what you're saying, but I want to present another wrinkle. Uh we're about to elect officers, which is going to render this document as I'm reading it wrong for us to approve.
Yeah.
So
Yeah, we're going to have to change that.
Yeah, so I mean, I think, yeah, I think this is kind of a moot point. I think Wade's point is not hard headed. It it is, this document isn't ready. Regardless of why, it's it's not ready. And I mean, to approve it like this, we're going to have to approve it again anyway.
Sure.
Yeah, I mean, I don't see a problem with the document in terms of, I'm not seeing that we're changing in policies as the time in terms of limits or, you know, In terms of limits or, you know, um, if there's a board, uh, signature, um, uh, versus staff signature, I don't see that this is doing that, it's just adding Byron, um, to the account. Um, but your point is, well, I've taken, um, I think that this needs to be revised anyway to reflect the new officers.
Right, and we can't add, and Jade's point is we can't simply add Byron.
Correct, correct, correct.
So, I mean, I, yeah, I mean, we could, we could do, we could table this.
Everybody else, yeah.
Yeah, we could table this and, um, come back to it and then amend it live. I think that that is, um.
Um.
Sure.
Yeah.
But yeah, like that, those are the options I think we have. It's tabling it until next month or it's, uh, it doesn't make sense to vote on it now, right? We've got it, we, we're gonna have to do it again next month to add new officers.
It doesn't, and let me just say this, um, it was my assumption that this actually went through finance, um, um, investment committee. Uh, so maybe you want to pass it through them first, Damon, before, uh, getting it back to the full board.
I understand.
Yeah, so let's, so Chairwoman, I, I think, um, I would, um, do we need to make a motion to table this? I can.
Yes.
So moved?
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second, by Wade.
Okay.
All those in favor, it's I understand, aye?
Aye.
Opposition, hearing none, uh, we'll table this until the next meeting. All right, y'all, we getting there. Thank you for your patience, um, thus far. We're almost finished. Uh, we have one important piece of business under, uh, other business and that is the election of our new officers. Um, and so, uh, I guess we could open the floor for nominations. Um, we're ready to move, uh, with that. We have, uh, chair, chairman, uh, vice chairman and secretary treasurer. Those are three, Damon?
That's correct.
All right.
So question, I'm sorry, question for council, do we take these one at a time, the nominations?
I think, I don't see Jade on, or might have lost Jade. Unless we lost.
Damon, it, it, Damon, it kind of, it depends, uh, cause I mean, if somebody, I know, asks, y- y- you could, you could, somebody could also recommend a slate.
Yeah, that, that's, I was gonna, uh, call for it.
But I, it's just, it's variable.
Okay, I understand.
Hey, uh, hey guys, I'm sorry, I went out for just a couple seconds when I was talking over it. Um, I'm sorry, and I heard, right when I came back, I heard something about a council. Can you re- restate the question, Damon?
Well, I, the question I posed is, uh, whether or not the selection of board offices needs to be taken individually. And the board just indicated that, um, they prefer to do it as a slate or have, we have the option to do it as a slate.
Yeah, that's correct. You can do it either way, whatever the board's question is.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Jade. All right, um, so I will, um, the floor is open for nominations, um, at this moment. Does anybody want to nominate late? Uh, can I nominate this late?
I think so. I mean, anybody can.
Okay, so, um, I will nominate, um, as a slate, uh, chair, chairman, uh, Edgar Chase, uh, vice chair, uh, Angelica Morris and treasurer, uh, Wei Wu. That's my slate, if you all, um, accept. Uh, we can vote on the slate. Are there any, uh, other nominations?
Jade, don't we need a second?
Ask a second.
Okay, we're good.
Yeah, she didn't need a second.
Okay. These rules.
I'm trying to do this on.
Death by million cuts.
All right, um, do we have?
One more time?
I'm sorry.
Could we repeat that slate one more time?
Oh, sure, um, chair, uh, Mr. Chase, uh, vice chair, Ms. Morris and treasurer, uh, Mr. Wu.
Madam Chair, I think it's also, um, I think just as a point of order, it might be good just to make sure you have on the record that they have accepted those nominations.
Yes.
Before you vote on them.
Yeah. So, um, it is, uh, been seconded. Uh, do you all accept the nominations? For those folks who have been.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Uh, very good. Uh, are there any other nominations? Okay, well, if hearing none, I will close, uh, the nomination and we'll vote.
Madam Chair, Madam Chair, one, one, one other, um, one other point of order. Because this was an item that was added to the agenda. If you could just make sure that there is no public comment before you all take the vote, um, again, just for the record.
Okay, thank you, Jade. Yeah, I did not consider that. Ms. Elizabeth or Naj, can we ask if there's public comment? Do we have any, uh, comments?
No public comments at this time.
Thank you. We'll open the floor, uh, for public comments, just one last time. Let me know if anything pops up. Okay. Nothing? We'll close the public comment portion. Are we ready for the vote? Jade, we ready? Can we proceed?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, all those in favor of, uh, the recommended slate of officers, uh, for twenty twenty-one, um, please respond by saying aye. Those opposed?
Uh.
All right, uh, don't hear any opposition, so the ayes have it. Uh, congratulations to the new officers.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congrats.
Looking forward to you all moving forward. Mr. Chase, meeting in shorts. I'm handing over my gavel. Probably can't see me, but.
He won't afford you to talk now, Mr. Chase.
Y'all want to say anything? Uh, Mr. Chase, you're on mute.
Can't see you. Kevin?
Thank you, I, I've, I've, I've been talking, uh, on mute for, for a little while, but, but I do want to thank you all and, and, and I want to thank everyone for their commitment, uh, to this, as, as well as this discussion that we had at this board's meeting. And you can see the passion of, of, uh, all of our board members to get it right, uh, whether we're talking about the different green, uh, programs that we have or, or service to the community. So I look forward to stepping in and, and really continuing to push this board to, to keep our vision moving and, and, and really gonna rely on a lot of you all with the expertise, uh, that's been on this board for many years to help keep us pushing in the right direction. So I'm not gonna keep us much longer. I'm looking forward to this and, uh, thank you so much for entrusting me with the chairmanship.
Very good. Looking forward to working with you.
Looking forward to it.
And if the next, uh, agenda item, that, that was in on this agenda, right?
Yeah, I think we just need to adjourn.
One more, I'm sorry, one more thing, uh, Chairman Chase, uh, one of the first orders of business as chairman is to set the schedule for the year. Um, and we've had some conversation at the committee level regarding, uh, the schedule moving forward. So as of now, uh, as you know, we meet, the, the committees meet on the same day as the board meeting. The, there was a time in the past where, uh, committees met a week ahead of the full board meeting. Um, and, and we talked a little bit about it last year as a board, but, um, if y'all need more time to think about it and we can have some offline discussions, um, about the schedule that you'd like to see moving ahead, just let us, let the staff know, we'll make the adjustments. Otherwise, we'll keep the, the, the schedule as is. Board meetings on the third, Tuesday of every month, uh, with committee meetings and board meetings happening on the same day.
Sounds good, and, and if we could, Damon, uh, in, instead of putting everybody on the spot right now, let, can we circulate an email, just maybe a quick little, uh, cause I, I, I know there was much more to that. I, I think the last one, we were doing a flip flop of committee times versus who had the two, who had the twelve and is that still working, uh, as we wanted to? So it may be good just to give a little people more time, uh, as we move out of COVID and virtual, hopefully soon, to start thinking when we are back in person, uh, past this, will that same committee work, meet on the same day as the two o'clock and then come back to that same location at four? So I'm just saying that to put every board's member in a mindset of eventually, hopefully, we will get out of this virtual aspect. And it may be a day, uh, that you will be meeting if we keep the same, uh, process on that same day for, I guess, two or three or four hours plus, uh.
Okay. We can, and to your point, uh, Chairman Chase, we can send out a survey to the board members, um, and, you know, when you were, when you're ready to make a decision, you can, but we can at least survey the board to gather everybody's preferences.
Damon, um, I don't know if you, you or your staff use, uh, like Doodle for doing polls? If not, show you, it's quite nice for doing these sorts of things and it's free.
Okay.
So, um, I'm happy to educate one of your staff members.
I have a lot, tons of experience with Doodle. I'm happy to send it out that way.
Okay, well, I'm just looking for a way to simplify everyone. So for whatever it's worth, it's great to hear.
Thanks.
Okay, that's it from the staff. Chairman Chase.
Okay, so is there a motion to adjourn?
A move.
Second.
Do it all at once.
So it's been moved and properly seconded, so I think we are all good to go.
Y'all have a good one. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good.